Right into our work session. The only thing that we have on the work session is to go over the agenda. So if you can bring up, pull out your agenda. Dr. McCarrick, it's something a little different, just so I can explain it to you. Instead of reprinting all, I guess you're going green, is that what we're gonna call it? We're going green. And instead of printing a new agenda with the added items, you just put what numbers would be added and it's on the yellow sheet under each. So under finance, it'll be number 10. Other personnel, this name will be added to number 6. And number 14 and 15 would be added. So at this time, I'm just gonna run through. We'll see the reports, obviously, for the, for the public meeting. So if we can start on new business, other property transportation. If anyone has any questions in that area. Nothing has changed from the original agenda.
Yes, participation under number 2 and 3. Actually, and 4. It looks like we're only approving that for just a few days. And then picking up under some type of a contract with Wall Street County. So is there like some kind of savings there at that point? Why did the transportation companies change that?
We had to get a company to transport students. And no one would pick up the bid that was put out. That being said, that's why the loan transportation was given at the time of the work. And then Wall Street County Special Services School District offered us a better deal where students, having students actually taking tabs to and from school. They're actually in a smaller school bus that is picking them up. And it was a small decrease in how much we were paying, even with the service fee that was given. But Wall Street County was nice enough to put it out of all their vendors as well, even though we weren't the Wall Street County. So we appreciate that.
Any other questions on the property and transportation?
I'd like to make a comment on the field trips. I was very impressed by the creativity of the purposes for each of the field trips. That being said, that's all I can say.
So then we will move to personnel. And personnel, obviously, has number 6, an additional name added for the substitute teacher. Free substitute teacher on the pay sheet. And then number 14 and the number 15, if you could look them. Over number 15, obviously, we will not approve until after we need an executive session to go over superintendent evaluation.
Questions on the staff for the summer school program? And I noticed there were things that went on for a few weeks. I think that went on for five days. Things that were teacher only, work only. I just, can someone explain this to me, like just break down the elements?
Well, I think we're all explaining. There's some in programs right now that we're using. We're using this year's money. That's why we're going back to financial life first. And then the other summer program, all of the principals on the channel as well. Some people that are both working. A lot of the programs similar to this, we've done it before. So the same standard, which was also involved. If you guys want to explain, but it's a great incentive.
Program number one, Steve and I kind of just collaborated to come up with like a district summer program. I mean, sure, it's broken down by schools, but we're kind of just collaborating to make it one program for the district. And that's your typical five-week program or 20 days. That basically has, basically has a language arts literacy focus, but we'll also be doing other things. Program number two, just like Mr. Anucci just mentioned, was using this year's funds. We were trying to be creative and offer students another opportunity that will also have a literacy focus.
And is this a check of remediation program? Or strictly a summer reading enhancement program?
It's, I mean, it's, I would call remediation, I mean, I look at it more as enrichment to all. But I know that the terms you use, I guess are, you know, based on what funds you need to use. It's basically to strengthen literacy skills for students that are recommended for the program.
Okay, and these are middle to 40's children?
Both.
The first two?
Uh, it's both. It's all, it's K to 8.
So what's the third program?
The third program, we actually had a teacher that suggested keeping our libraries open to give students accessibility to our school libraries during the summer. So that was an idea that, you know, one of the teachers had. So we said, you know what, we'll try it this year. It's about three hours once a week where students at Bingham and Downing can access their school library. And the same thing for Volt's.
So like I could bring my son to the library that day?
And we're still in the development stages with that one. I know that one of the teachers had mentioned maybe reaching out to like Triton to see if there was National Honor Society students that might wanna, you know, come and get some hours to help. I mean, but there will be manned by a certified teacher and there will be accessibility to the library.
We always have students that they can, that need, that need access.
Yes, and I thought that was an excellent idea to kind of, again, connect the dots.
We also, the Teachers of America Club, they would really enjoy that.
Okay, I'll probably reach out to you for that.
And hopefully with summer reading responsibility with students, it'll give the students access throughout the summer. Come and, you know, hopefully even after maybe they're done their assigned book, they can come and take another one out. It's just, again, all of these programs going just back to touch on what Ms. Debbie said about program one. We had something like this last year for more of a remediation, but it, it lacked a little consistency. And what we're trying to do is, is provide a condensed school day, if you will. We're gonna work from special areas into there, just to make it appealing. Because it's a voluntary program, we, we tell them we want high attendance, but unfortunately, we don't get it all the time. So it's hopefully a little more enticing to the kids. Hopefully it's a little more supportive for parents for childcare, because it is four days a week. And, you know, again, we're trying to just create an atmosphere of learning that's also, I think, it's enjoyable for the kids, yeah, for that first of all, but also a little more consistent for parents.
Yeah, some of the feedback that we received was that attendance inconsistency wasn't always the greatest with the students. And kids came to us about an hour and a half at a time last year. And I thought, my goodness, parents come, they walk their kids to the, the school, and by the time they get home and, you know, have a half a cup of coffee, they have to come back. And sometimes that doesn't always work. It's thinking an hour and a half, how much are they really getting accomplished? How much more are they, more than the time are they getting taught? So doubling that time, I think, is what's gonna help our students succeed.
Last year, I believe, it was only 20 weeks. This time, the kids will actually get all 20.
This is four days a week, three hours a day inconsistent. And the teachers are really excited about it too.
And this is program one?
And this is for people who were, who will be recommended. This isn't for everybody. This is for people like on a remediation.
Correct, and like using the RTI mile, these are students that are identified as being tier two or tier three students in language arts and mathematics. And we already have that data. So those parents will be notified. And we're gonna do some surveys to see who's available. You know, we'll go through the process. So we have room to add to that list. We wanna maximize our, our space.
And approximately how many kids do you think that would include? Is everyone ultimately what's the?
I think I have about 46 kids between the two schools right now that are already identified as tier two and tier three.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the exact numbers, but I mean, I think you still want a small group environment for the teachers, so it's more of that individualized instruction. So I mean, I think you wouldn't wanna go higher than a 10 to 1 ratio, but I feel like with the staff we have here, if we get a 10 to 1 ratio, we're really accommodating a lot of kids and hopefully closing a lot of gaps over the summer.
And once we get the permission slips back from those students who have been identified, if there's additional openings, then you can open it up to other students as well.
Okay, so summer, then the summer reading is strictly using one funding pad already? Just to open up, you're saying, open up the library?
Program two?
Program two.
Yeah, if, and again, we're, we're kind of supposed to spitball this when we talk to people once they've been approved, but it, I, I kind of see it as maybe a, a longer battle of books, where kids, you know, they come in, they read, they discuss, they debate, they use that as their entire,
literature circles.
They use their entire, higher level thinking skills, things like that. And this isn't just limited to remediation. I think this is also for kids who just, you know, the kids like battle of books, who volunteer for that and they wanna do something else, they wanna be around their favorite book.
They can read a handbook.
They can read a handbook.
And then program three, strictly library open and instruction?
Yeah.
And that's open for all students at Bingham and Downing involved. We're gonna be working with Ms. Maytag to set down where, where Bingham and Downing third grade students will be going. Will they become involved, which might be a nice experience for them to kind of see the school and the library? Or will we have to send them, because of the system, to their home schools that they currently provide? The extended school year program, the special education program for our identified students and is highly mandated, and that's with the times.
Right, and summer reading in the library are three hours a day as well?
Yes, so one day a week.
One day, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
But that wouldn't be like a drop-off then?
No.
That would be, let's go to the li, it's gonna go to the public library, we're gonna go to your school. So there's a little different, the reappointment, you'll notice that it looks a little different, just it's a list. Number eight is all the 10-year certified staff. And then number nine is people who, staff members who are on the third year. Number 10 is people who are on their second year. And then you turn to number 11. It is people who are on their first year for the community, including their first year. And number 12 is the administrative staff, non-10-year. 13, school business administrator. 14 is curriculum writing for the summer. That's funded by NCLB, Title I funds. And 15, again, will be the superintendent evaluation. Any questions on that?
Just to clarify, what are the areas that we're looking at?
Currently, we will be looking at all areas of curriculum. As Mr. Tricely mentioned, we said, even some special area teachers will be involved in our summer program as well. What we're hoping to have in doing with the curriculum, see where updates are needed. We can see where we can pull information that's currently in the curriculum to drive what's gonna be taught and used over the course of the summer and prepare for the summer program.
Any other questions? So under finance, look that over. We do have the number 10 added. And number 10 is what you were talking about for professional development. And again, this is funded through Title I funds.
2A.
Title, 2A, excuse me. From this current, it's here, we have it.
How often would this individual be here and they've been available?
Currently, they're checking their availability. We're looking for upwards of 20 days. When she comes in, what she'll do is she will be pushing in two slash rooms to do a lot of lessons, whatever the teachers are teaching. She will incorporate into what she's doing. I've had the experience of working with both Southend College and Individual in my previous position in another district. And she goes above and beyond to support teachers. And I think if we were to go with technology, this would be a huge benefit.
Would be a full, they're full days?
Full days.
So she's paid on a per day basis?
Per day basis through a contract, through SRI slash EPC, which is God's College.
Which is?
That is current $750 debt.
Well, yeah, I actually, I actually said to Mr. Luckon that I, I think, especially if you know the person, I think that's a good price and we have the funds. So why not use them to, to enhance, you know, part of our teachers? So I think that's great. Any other questions? Under, there's some, on the back, there's some different.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Number four. We have to participate in this, right, Mr. Wayne? We don't have a choice. It's not like there's another, not they're saying, like, do you wanna join our program?
I just can't tell them that.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, it's not something we even have a choice right now.
It's very limited, organized.
All right. Cause you know what my problem is. I wrote a letter to give to Mr. Wayne to submit to this organization after what happened to our baseball program this year here, close. We got, we got, we got cheated. I mean, you know, we tied and they flipped a coin. No one from Volt School present, and that's how it was determined who went into the playoffs. You know, so I just feel as though like, again, I, I wrote letters, parent, but I just go on tour and I would feel terrible if we didn't have that.
Right, as a trustee, Mark, what is on the rules of regulation?
Basically, what it is.
And that's something I'd upon.
I just covered, I lost the same thing.
Right.
But it will be addressed to, well, 5:30, you know, I'll be there.
Can I come?
We should.
Just asking.
Remember, you don't want our other stuff.
Can I quickly explain that, that situation? Basically, what happened was it was a team that was behind us in the standings the entire season. And it looked like we were a lock to be in the playoffs. And they pulled off a monumental upset that put them in a tie with us. All the tiebreakers are searched out at that point. You know, division opponents, league opponents, and all that kind of stuff. And it came down to the ultimate tiebreakers, coin toss. And.
So there were other avenues, you're sure there was?
It's actually another case.
That wasn't the final one.
Well, traditionally, you know, breaks their hearts. And this is, traditionally, and, and, you know, and Mark says, we can talk to those guys. Now, I could call them today in a second, but traditionally, what the league has done is they, they will score playoffs and we do have a chance to play. I'm telling you, it went out to the last day of the regular season. And because of the way the snow gates had fallen and it just really, when you're, exactly. When you, when you line up for the league, when you line up all of those games with facility use and all those kinds of things, it just really just created the perfect storm, unfortunately, for us this year. But we wanna be back there again next year, you know that. So that's what we wanna do.
I have another question on the phone.
Sure.
Number seven, 40-months state contracts for, except for you guys?
Yes, those are a common machine that they do have in Volt's.
And also, do we have, I agree totally with number nine. But do we have a policy, one or is it part of the contract with private parties and?
Yeah, but it was research before.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I totally agree with this, but I just wanna be sure it doesn't board with Ms. Maytag.
Any other questions? Curriculum stays the same with, I guess, number one through five?
Do you have dates for graduation, the eighth grade dance?
That's a good question. 16th and the non-grad. What is it? Sorry.
16th is graduation, Monday night.
Monday night is graduation?
Yeah. And then ninth is the dance.
That's the Monday before?
Yeah.
And the last day of school with them is 17th, correct? The lesson's notes?
Sorry.
So Mark.
Everyone's quite, there's two events.
You have time, time for?
6:00, 5:00, 6:00, 5:00, 6:00, 7:00.
You should probably go 4:00, 7:00 if you wanna see it, then you have.
What else do we have? Graduation, I believe, that they come, time is, it's very, 6:30, 5:00, they have time to slice this. So we'll have that, I'll send that.
I'm actually gonna get a letter at this one for, well, it'll, it'll go to Adrian's, but we like stopping to have it. It's about creating the trip and payment and all that with all the dates on there. We just wanted to make sure of it. We haven't had a couple of complications in the weather. And the reason, again, is we have graduation on a Monday. I know it's probably not the best day to have it, but Tuesday is a big day for confirmation in the running.
Confirmation's coming tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, to have it the Friday before, I don't know, that's definitely something that would happen.
And then the last day of school is the?
Test.
For the students.
Students, yes.
All right, any other, any, anything else?
I just have questions for reports, but you wanna wait for the board meeting to actually meet?
No, you can, let's go in now. We have time. We have, we have 20 minutes, so why not go in now? Go to our reports.
I'm sorry, second page of our report.
I actually have a question too. Can we, can you, what is this?
In everyone's folders, you will have an upcoming event sheet for New Jersey School Works Association. It lists every event between next week, all the way before your convention. So on that, every school board member, you need to fill that out.
But you're making me nervous. What, I don't have to do any of these. I don't have to do any of these governments.
They're, they're optional that you can sign up for, so if you know where you need.
I already did all that. Right, so I'm, so I'm, okay.
So if you know, you can use that.
Well, but usually, we get something like that, so it'll be like, you better do this.
Yeah, okay. I just want you to know that I know it's a problem, it's great, but I'm all about that two-hour class that I have to go to now.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Lynn, so then we can go to, to our reports.
Second to two.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I keep on your second, your penitentiary court, Mark.
It's in your brain.
Okay, okay. Just to make a comment about stress estimate. We've got to see that some progress is being made there. I'm very nervous as board member that we have not done any policy work per se.
And I'm saying, there's the last seven months of policy work is.
Cause it's small and tedious and.
It's long and tedious, but there's a lot of things that were left out. You can maybe discuss that more in that book. So it was a lot of work in everyone's office to review this. And involving school boards at stress estimate, we were finally able to come up with an hour and a half of those things. That's why I put on the intended date for May 13 to have a policy approval meeting. Remember stress estimate? We can waive the two-reading requirement that evening. And if you have all the policies sent to you, well, we will, that May 13th may be reviewed. And then we get a lot of our policies that need to be updated on, approved that evening.
Are there many that have to be updated?
There is, yes.
Quite a few.
It wasn't anything, again, a lot of things that we thought were approved by the board were never adopted in that policy book. So we had to go through, basically, everything in one of that. And you, you've seen that book before, so there are, yeah, a lot of them. But again, stress estimate's a lot of standard stuff, but just different use in the standard issue.
Well, I mean, they're, they're like our watchdogs, right? Basically, it's what they, what they're. No, their recommendations are there, of course, not to necessarily approve, but I found, and I felt as a committee member, we were willing to be committing, that it was a wonderful tool from them to, to lead absolutely, that'll lead through.
Moving forward from here on out, after that, make sure people have the policies on it, basically, on every board.
Okay.
I appreciate your patience. That is one of the areas.
So that's, so that's the special meeting you wanted to have? You wanna talk about that real quick now?
If you do that possibly May 13th, 6:00.
Are you not available?
And I would be, I'll probably have a comment here a bit, five days.
Do we wanna do it, how about the next Tuesday?
The day prior to the board.
The night before the board meeting?
Yes.
The board, are we done, we're done? Cause you don't wanna wait until the board meeting.
They said with the number of policies, if there's questions?
It'll take about two hours. How about the week, how about the week before that, the sixth? Are you around that?
You're here.
The sixth, I had a different one.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not having everything to his pride.
Does it have to be Tuesday?
Could be Monday as well.
Is there a question about?
I am not.
Are you on that whole weekly, Lynn?
Yes, I am. You're leaving wedding plans for my niece and that's big, so I'm wanting to marry her.
On the way, the 12th through the 16th.
You're waiting that, so.
Friday, Monday.
So the only other option that I could think of, if it works, if it works for us, maybe, is changing our meeting time a little earlier on Wednesday, the 21st, since we're all gonna be here and just be prepared for a long meeting. That's our regular schedule, we're going back to Mondays and May.
Right.
So since we all have that date in our agenda, is that okay with you guys? Maybe start a little earlier, being here for, you know, duration for a few, quite a few hours? If possible. What time can we start? What time can you get here, April? No. Okay, do you want to start at 5:30 that time?
Is that still getting us not find that?
Well, I mean, you'll have the information well.
We'll have it ahead of time. You know, we can just prepare ourselves. But I just want, I, I would want, I want everyone here. I want Lynn here, I want Chad here. And it's our regular meeting day. You know what I'm saying, Maria? Does that make sense? You guys are taking that, we built that?
Yeah, we say four hours and we're saying we're gonna start at 5:30. There kills the work session at 6:00. I'm just asking, just asking.
Maybe we push the start of the board meeting to 7:30. Gives us two hours of regular session.
I'm fine.
If you have time to act.
I'll take that, sure.
All right, so make sure we advertise appropriately. Our, Mr. Business Administrator?
5:30, you said?
5:30 with a meeting start time of 7:30. So give us two full hours, just in case we need it. It'll be out till us two weeks in advance. It's gonna get here to nine, it'll be out till us, you know, at least a week in advance.
And the six starts.
All right. Any other, what else? Any other questions on reports? Lynn, are you going with the 21st?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay. You're welcome. No, no. Thank you for moving the meetings to Monday, you know. Any, anything else on, on the reports?
Yes, I'm sorry. Sean, your part BDA assessments, what did the staff assess? How did they go?
They were extremely well. We only had a couple errors with the computer system. And it wasn't necessarily on our end as much as it was, it had everyone testing at the same time. So they're also testing out their system as well, as well as the question that are being. Overall, the assessment went well. We have a lot of teachers who are able to come in and see what the assessment looked like. And how it's working. And then we also have a model example up on the school website under student resources for part practice problems that families can go home on their own computer. But you'll see that certain internet browsers might not work. So we have to make sure that we did a lot of things ahead of time. And thanks to Janelle and Jan and the whole team, everything worked out completely. And Ms. Maytag, I'm gonna excuse her last web session.
5:00, 7:00, is that supposed to be possible? Is that going to be less stress? It's expected to be that.
Less stress for the kids, not for adults.
But that's what he said, he said it's less stress.
It should be less stress. Oh, and I know that you discussed also with New York Life Insurance, can any changes with?
That was simply that everyone came in, a bit of us know about like insurance. How's it if you need help with staff with different?
All right, and more, I just have one more question. We had a conversation after board conference about A and Ts in the buildings.
About who?
About our distributors.
Yes.
And you were looking into the possibility of getting more individuals.
I know we had two here at Volt's.
Right. Okay, it's two and a half in this building. Remember, we had this whole, this big conversation.
Yeah, we responded to what they're, what they're trying to spare.
Right, I mean, my biggest concern, is one here at the front office and then come back by the gym. Is that enough time to get to that far corner of the building? Yes, okay, I, I'm just making sure. Thanks. So you are in the process of getting two more for the elementary building? Okay, thank you. Do they have enough? Yeah. Yeah, there's only one in this elementary building, is correct. Yeah, with multiple floors, that concerns me very much. Okay. That's all I have.
Does anybody have any other questions? Concerns, issues? No? Yes?
Dr. McCarrick, how is the evaluation of the teachers? I remember at the beginning of last year, you created the master plan of scheduling and she wasn't very nice to us.